Meeting for Wednesday, November twenty six, twenty twenty five at six P M. Let's get a roll call. Councilmember Bottomley, absent. Councilmember Dell?
Present.
Councilmember Hornish?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Here.
Mayor Cranford, here. Thank you. We have a quorum. Pledge. Everyone could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the city council's special meeting agenda for November twenty sixth?
Make a motion to approve the city council's special meeting agenda for November twenty sixth.
Councilmember Dell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Aye.
Mayor Cranford?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll go ahead and open up public comment to any item not on the agenda. If anyone here wants to make public comment. Stephanie, go ahead and come on up.
Thank you. Stephanie Moreno, um, city resident and small business owner. I take a lot of beatings for coming up here and making comments to you or posting on our page about what's going on without trying to resolve it internally. And I'm a little tired to get a meetup because staff knows how often I do try to get things resolved internally before posting and kind of given up because it doesn't always happen. So I have two items that I brought to your attention or staff's attention before. One is that the recent planning notices for three development projects are not on your website at all. They're not under notices. The way you have it set up, normally you have to go to the main page, you have to click on a tab to get it to open, to read notices, and then it takes you to a folder. You have to pick the year, and then you go to the year, and it's not sorted chronologically as it's required to be. So you have to search to see or modify it to sort it, and in this case, all three are missing. But you have to know how to do this to get to them. It's your responsibility to make sure that constituents know what you're you're voting on and what the planning commission is voting on. Just putting it on your Facebook page isn't good enough. Putting it at the post office isn't good enough. I'm asking you to get this fixed so that the notice are clearly on your site where people can see them. They're not on the planning site either. In fact, there's only two projects listed on there and only one has a link. The second item, and uh, this is not Victoria's fault and it's not Cameron's fault because they can't know what they don't know. They're new. Actually, it's none of your fault either, probably because you're all new. But I will hold the council accountable. You're paying the city clerk position illegally. I brought this to your attend- to the city clerk's attention July thirtieth. She asked me to put it in writing. I sent a very detailed memo. I checked with Cameron about it later. He said it been referred. Vicki was talking to counsel. I understand that was referred to counsel. I've not heard another word about it. And I'm going to give you that information today. I'd appreciate it being on the agenda. Needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Culver, Plymouth. My question is, what what justifies an emergency meeting? Uh, what's the emergency here that is is uh, dire that's uh, an emergency that citizens of Plymouth? It doesn't appear that uh, that there's a proper emergency or proper uh, this meeting. You can't just go out and have a meeting just because you want to have a meeting. You got to have, meet the criteria of the law. And uh, I don't believe that this meeting reach meets require of the necessity for an emergency speed meeting. And I've talked to several people just in the last hour that said they had no idea this was happening. And they can't believe that it happened the night before Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I think uh, we will take a good look at this and see if we need to challenge any action taken tonight because of the fact of the way that it was set up.
Thank you.
As an emergency.
So just to clarify, we're not having an emergency meeting. We're having a special meeting tonight that the agenda was posted for twenty four hours in advance as required by the Brown Act.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Public comment on something not on the agenda? Okay, I'll close public comment at this time. Any, oh, sorry, anything online? No one's online. Okay. And nothing written in. Okay, we'll close close public comment at this time and move to four point one. Discussion and possible action to reinstate the tribal ad hoc committee and appointment of ad hoc committee members. I'm going to go to the staff report first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, at the June twenty six, twenty twenty five meeting, city council, excuse me, the city council voted.
Oh, Cameron, your microphone.
Did it go off? Sorry. In the intervening months since the dissolution of the ad hoc committee, it has become increasingly difficult for the city to respond to emerging issues related to the tribe. Consequently, staff respectfully request the city council consider reinstating the tribal ad hoc committee and select two representatives from the city council to serve on this committee. Having an ad hoc committee in place supports continuity and discussions and representation during intergovernmental meetings between the tribe, its representatives, and the city. This would also enable discussions to happen on a more rapid pace and on and on short notice when circumstances warrant. The ad hoc committee structure is also the most viable to encouraging meaningful engagement between the city and the tribe on key issues. Um, there is no fiscal impact associated with this item, and the staff recommends the city council discuss and reinstate the tribal ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, I have first Butch Cranford, four point one.
Butch Cranford, property owner, City of Plymouth. Well, while I appreciate the staff report, I'd like to know what these emergencies are that are related to the tribe that have occurred since June. If anybody knows what they are. Is there a list of emergencies related to the tribe?
There's no emergency. There, there's never been, no one said there's an emergency. The staff report didn't say there's an emergency.
Issues related to the tribe?
Their water was shut off. And they're requesting for it to be turned back on.
Understanding is, is that's an issue related to the contractor.
Correct.
The the tribe apparently, according to all of their doc- official documentation, they've got eighty one gallons per minute they can pump twenty four hours a day, seven days a week till the end of the world. They just drilled another well because that wasn't enough water, apparently. I I have I have no understanding why all of a sudden we have a special meeting to reinstate an ad hoc committee when, as far as I can tell, it it couldn't wait until next week? I guess. Yeah, I guess everybody else is trying to get ready for Thanksgiving. Does it strike you as odd that you called a special meeting on Thanksgiving Eve? And then you probably wonder why nobody's here? Oh, ad hoc committee. I recently sent a request to four council members. I excluded one council member because that council member is fully aware of everything that I've been doing for the last twenty three years. Those four council members, I received one phone call in reply to my request. This council is apparently not interested in the history of the ION ban. They're not interested in any of any of the laws or regulations related to feet of trust or to Indian gaming or to the Indian land consolidation act. So I can't even begin to imagine which two of you are going to be on an ad hoc committee to address the issues related to a demonstratively illegal, not in compliance with federal law project. It boggles my mind that we're going to have two of you somehow interfacing with the ION ban. And I have requested a forum for the people who own property and live in the city of Plymouth for months. And no such forum has yet happened. And I have no idea when and if it will ever happen. This is outrageous. And I'm going to suggest that based on the way that this uh, how many of you, how many of you read my comments?
I read them, but your three minutes is up for this con- for this.
Yeah.
Comment.
Okay, I'll conclude. That's the other thing, three minutes. Something this important and I get three minutes. Yeah, because there's a lot of people out here going to take up a lot of time tonight. This is outrageous. Now, I I'm going to suggest that the vote has already been, should have already been taken because the way the agenda item is.
I'm going to ask you to conclude, please.
The way the agenda item is worded, you're going to appoint members tonight.
John, you're up next, four point one.
Uh, John Culver. You are aware, I guess, that the tribe was required to file a water report. And uh, and this was supposed to have been done when the, within uh, six weeks of what, when they county made an agreement with them last year before a shovel full of dirt was was moved. No report, no report. Keep asking for the report, no report. Now, all of a sudden, they got a water crisis. Uh, and and they haven't acted in good faith on their side of the water crises. And now they want you people to meet and confer. I I I believe that you ought to meet and confer when you've got someone that you're going to be meeting with and conferring that they're meeting in good faith. And uh, if they are making their uh, agreements with a water report and stuff in the past, I don't see that they're going to be doing anything here. And what have they done? They didn't, they didn't act in good faith when they went to a person that really didn't have the ability to give a report or a access and created a new street without any, any hearings on it. We have not had a hearing on this thing since two thousand nine. And we haven't had a hearing in court since two thousand nine. So they're moving along and doing what they damn well please, when they damn well want to. They aren't, they're having the best interest city of Plymouth. They haven't made any arrangements to meet what the director decision indicates that they should be making retribution uh, for the property tax or the C O T tax. They aren't acting in good faith on anything that they've dealt with as a city, except now. They need water evidently for construction. And they haven't done their own, uh, they haven't done their duty of providing the information they need. How about this council have a meeting or 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 uh, put out a rep- a opinion form to the members of the city and see what what the general public wants. It's time you represent the general public and not a special interest group such as the ION ban in New York and ends. You need to be on, you need to be on equal ground. Currently, you aren't on an equal ground. You're only meeting their necessity, and they aren't, they aren't acting in good faith with us.
Thank, thank you. Stephanie?
Stephanie Moreno, um, I find myself in a unique position of agreeing with Mr. Culver and Mr. Cranford on process issues. The explanation that that Cameron's given for needing this doesn't pass the smell test. You haven't scheduled a single agenda item for the tribe since you disbanded the ad hoc committee. So it doesn't make sense that all at once that process isn't working. You haven't implemented that process. You haven't put it on the agenda to try to get the council to start talking about these things. So it doesn't make sense to do away with a process that you never implemented until you try and see if it works. I did want to read this. Nothing has been happening with the casino project. Council should not have been able to anticipate and schedule for discussion. In fact, after voting to terminate the ad hoc committee, a proactive mayor and city manager would have ensured such an important topic to the town's residents was placed on each agenda for progress update and to be able to deal with time sensitive issues. This item instead appears to be moved by the city to once again hold discussions regarding this very important project away from public scrutiny. The council would be best served their constituents by denying the request to restore the ad hoc committee and by directing the interim city manager to bring back a written implementation plan and timeline to ensure that all city council members are publicly involved in these important discussions and that there is full transparency to the town's residents regarding the decisions being made regarding a future agreement with the tribe. I also want to give this copy of the F P P C letter that was written. Uh, again, um, B B K represents the city, but there's only one city attorney and it seems disingenuous that you have multiple attorneys claiming to be the city attorney for the city of Plymouth. Anyway, the F P P C letter, I never saw it in correspondence for the public to see. I found it online. It's a public document, should have been shared. Mayor Cranford has said repeatedly that she, it's okay, she doesn't have conflict. That's not what this letter says. It's qualified that she doesn't have a conflict. It's, in one case, it says they can't make a decision if she has conflict because she hasn't provided enough information. So I am asking Mayor Cranford to recuse herself from future tribal discussions in an abundance of caution to protect herself more than anything. Um, and I'm going to turn this in and I encourage all of you to read it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on four point one? Keith?
Uh, Keith White, City of Plymouth. Mine, I don't know, and I'm not, I'm really not trying to be a smart ass when I say this. But uh, I had a hard time when I, when the ad hoc committee was disbanded. I can always like, why? And now I'm, I hate to say agree with the other ones. Why do you guys want it back? If I was on the other side, I wouldn't want to talk to you guys. You keep on disbanding, you put together, you disband, you put together. Be like, I don't want to talk, you know? So that's just, I guess, my two biggest questions about it all is, you know, why'd you disband it in the first place? And now why? Do you, I mean, I understand why you want to put it back now, but I mean, it's, I think that's going to be some tough negotiations that you got ahead of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on four point one? I'll put, close public comment and move to council conversation. Holger, you got anything?
Give me two, like a minute.
Okay. You guys want to take a minute? Yes, I, I read. While everybody is looking over the letter from the F P P C, I I want to clarify a few things. One is that the reason, my, my understanding of the reason we're requesting or that this was put on an, uh, an agenda to be discussed was because the tribe is not going to come to one of our council meetings to have a conversation with us about anything. In fact, I've was told that um, in tribe culture, uh, the chairman would only meet with somebody of of equal standing, at which in in this case would be myself. And so my understanding is the ad hoc committee is helpful because it allows this, it it prevents the city staff from just going and having conversations with the tribe by themselves and allows some input with the city council. I'll be frank, I'm conflicted on this. I can see both, both sides of it at this time. So that's my thoughts on that. Secondly, the reason this special meeting was called tonight was nothing nefarious except that we shut the water off to the tribe they requested, or to the, excuse me, to the contractor. They requested to have it turned back on, and there were insistence by some people on the council that that could not be done without this coming before council. And so then that encouraged a special meeting to have that happen because we won't be meeting again till December thirteenth. So, um, that's how that came to be. I don't want to be here the night before Thanksgiving any more than anybody else does. Andreas, if you want to address the F P P C letter? If you have any comments on that?
I don't.
Okay.
The letter didn't, I'll, I'll say a few things. The letter didn't identify conflict of interest based on the facts as they existed at the time that we sought the letter. And to date, we don't have any more facts that would change from that.
And for those who haven't read the letter, it just was a letter that was sent by the city attorneys on my behalf because there was a question of if I would have a conflict of interest in discussing or voting on tribe related issues. And Andreas, to be clear, you're saying, no, I do not have any conflicts of interest.
Correct.
Anyone else?
I mean, one distinction I'd like to make is that this whole water request is being requested by the construction company, correct? And uh, the tribe, which has been mentioned several times.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I mean, somebody's buying water in the city. I don't know. I can.
We're not talking about that right now. We're talking about the ad hoc committee.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. You're skipping ahead.
Skipping ahead.
Trying to get home to the pumpkin pie.
Listen, I'm hungry. Yeah, adult committee. I mean, my sentiment is that I want to make it as easy as possible for, for the city to work on any subject with anybody. So if we need an ad hoc committee, then yeah, because dismantling it obviously didn't work. We can't get anybody to come to the table, and it's really hard for us to reach out to them without having anything concrete. So that's my sense.
Debbie?
I would agree with Holger that if it helps in the process of negotiating with the tribe, if that's what's needed, then I think we should go ahead and do it.
On the night that we uh, voted to disband the ad hoc, it was brought up that at that particular time, we didn't really have any discussions going anyways that I recall. It ended. And it was stated that yes, we were disbanding that particular ad hoc, and if in the future it was brought to our attention that we needed to have an ad hoc or needed to reinstate it, that we could simply do so at, at the next meeting. So staff saying and and others telling us that apparently it's needed right now, moving forward. I, I would be for, for having it, and as we said it, that when we disbanded it, that we would just simply revisit it and and do this. So I don't have anything more to say that hasn't already been said. If it's a benefit to the city, if it's a benefit to all parties, then I would be for it.
Andreas, can you provide some clarity as to exactly the benefit of an ad hoc committee and or the not benefit, non benefit? Either way.
So the benefit of it is that the ad hoc committee meetings can happen on much shorter notice. And to the point that you raised earlier, tribe representatives aren't going to come here to these council meetings to speak openly and freely about the issues that affect both the city and the tribe. So being able to have those frank conversations, that's possibly even a bigger benefit than than just the ability to have meetings on a, on on shorter notice. So those are the huge two things in the pro ad hoc committee column. The downside is the, the transparency that I think everybody wants to have. The downside is the, the transparency that I think everybody wants to have. And to speak to that point is that final decisions can't be delegated to the ad hoc. It would be, the ad hoc would be bringing back recommendations to the full council for actual decisions on issues.
Can we put a stipulation in place that's an absolute that the ad hoc committee has to report? Because that's also an issue that was happening in the past. Is there was never any reporting or information being given to the public about what was happening with the tribe?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that the ad hoc committee members should be doing routinely. If they're sitting on an ad hoc committee and that ad hoc, ad hoc committee met between council meetings, they should be providing updates at the following council meetings. I don't have our ad hoc policy in front of me right now, but if that's not in there, that should be in there.
And I believe that happened at the, I, I believe that happened the last time is like, cause I recall the mayor reporting out on actions taken at ad hoc. So as far as the transparency issue, I believe she gave quite a lengthy report on everything that had been discussed with them.
Yeah, it'd be akin to the reports that you've all provide at the end of the meeting on, on all your other committee assignments when you participate in other meetings away from here.
I, I think there might be also some tribulation because there haven't been many meetings at all. So yeah, there's nothing to report. And when we don't report anything, maybe you should report that we've, have met. Here's the outcome, nothing. Just so people don't think that we're not reporting back.
That's a solid point. Thank you. Um, okay. Well, I'm going to leave it to my council members to. No, we, we don't do public comment after we've closed. Andreas?
We already took public comment, but if you want to open a public comment again, you can.
Okay, then I will.
If you're going to make it a negotiation ad hoc committee, it should say ad hoc committee, negotiation committee restricted to negotiations. Not just plain tribal committee that can talk about anything, including whether or not to provide them water or not. And then secondly, um, you've never had a, a meeting with the constituents to see what it is that's important to them about this casino, to know what to negotiate. So I suggest that that happened before you start negotiating.
You're right. And that's the second time that's, or third time it's been brought up. So I'm going to address this really quick. Um, it is on our agenda for January, I believe. Cameron, is it on our agenda for January to have a, like a town hall?
We haven't put one on the agenda yet. That's a date that we'd need to, um, decide. We haven't decided a specific date.
Either that or it was supposed to be on the December thirteenth agenda to make a date.
Yes, it's up.
So we have, I brought that up in our last city council meeting for those who may not remember. And so it's in process, like everything, it seems to take some time. So December thirteenth. Excuse me, why do I keep saying the thirteenth? December eleventh. Can that be on the agenda? To, for us to have a date for a town hall. Thank you.
We just pick a date right now. I mean, we know when the meetings are and.
I don't know. I don't have my calendar and it's in front of me and everything.
The city manager have one. We just pick a date and say we're going to do it and get it done.
We're doing public comment right now, so we have, we have to discuss that at another time, I think.
Yeah, Butch Cranford, property owner. Apparently it takes, uh, didn't take much time to get this meeting scheduled, but that aside, this ad hoc committee, I would like to see agendas. Well, what are you planning to talk about? What do you want to talk about? What needs to be talked about? And then on reports, I would like to, I would like to at least at a minimum have items discussed in, of a general nature. I don't want the discussion, but I want to know what you talked about. And in terms of recommendations, hopefully, hopefully you will have a town hall. I mean, I, I started to put in my comments. I'm beginning to think this isn't the Plymouth City Council. I'm beginning to think it's the IONB, the ION Ban Council. Months and months, I have requested that the maps that are in the IMND that show Village Drive in trust. Unrelated issue here, but it's something that could be talked about in an ad hoc committee, that those maps be corrected. Has the city done anything? No, not as far as I know. Nothing's been reported. There are issue after issue after issue that I have come to, come to this council and ask for action to be taken. And as far as I know, nothing's been done.
Anyone else for public comment? I'm going to close public comment at this time. Uh, council, if someone wants to make a motion either way or not, or whatever you want to do. Someone wants to take action.
Make a motion to reinstate the tribal ad hoc committee.
I'll second the motion. Council member Dale?
Aye.
Council member Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Aye.
Mayor Cranford?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, four point two.
We should also discuss who you want to appoint to the ad hoc committee.
Oh, that's part two. Okay. I don't think so. It's not in a separate agenda. And you've had two public comments on that same agenda item at this point. Um. Can, can I please ask that you just don't speak out from the audience? Thank you. Um, yeah, I did ask. I can also ask you to leave, so please stop. Do you have any comments that you would like to make?
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, we have to, if we're gonna, well, I guess we don't have to form the committee tonight. I don't know. Andreas?
You've decided to reinstate the committee, so it would only make sense to appoint two people to the committee. Otherwise you've got a concept of a committee.
We agenda is both. I think we just need to get it done. Put it on there.
Well, then suggest somebody again.
I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer for it.
So what do you want to do? Vote on who, on it? Yeah, you should vote on that.
You want to be on, on it?
I'm okay not being on it.
Okay.
We still did vote and just asking.
Yeah, you still, you, somebody has to make a motion.
Make a motion to appoint myself and Councilman Hornish to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Council member Dale?
Hold on, was there a second for that one?
A second.
Sorry. Council member Dale?
Aye.
Council member Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Aye.
Mayor Cranford abstain. Thank you. Motion passes. For clarity, before it gets reported anywhere, uh, my no vote is based on the constituents all coming up and saying that we shouldn't have an ad hoc committee. Um, so based on your commentary, that's what I'm going with. Um, four point two. Move to four point two. Discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to reconnect temporary construction water meter for construction at the Acorn Ridge Casino until the next regular. I think it's supposed to say meeting. It didn't print. Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, sorry, I'm going to read this again. Discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to reconnect temporary construction water meter for construction at the Acorn Ridge Casino until the next regular city council meeting on December eleventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, staff report, please.
Moorfield Construction Incorporated is constructing the Acorn Ridge Casino located at one seven five zero zero California Highway forty nine, which is an unincorporated Amber County. On two twenty six, twenty twenty five, Moorfield Construction submitted a fire hydrant meter rental application to the city for service through five one of twenty twenty five. This application was processed by the city's public works director, Kathleen Johnson, and a construction water meter was issued to Moorfield. The city received three thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty five cents deposit for the meter. Moorfield Construction then began using water from the hydrant located on Village Drive and was charged one hundred dollars per four thousand gallons of water plus a thirty dollar per month rental fee. On eleven fourteen, twenty twenty five, city staff disconnected water service from the hydrant on discovering that an encroachment permit Moorfield had from the city for work on Village Drive had expired in July and the time for the meter rental had gone well beyond the May first, twenty twenty five date stated on Moorfield's meter application. The city also notified Moorfield Construction regarding the disconnection. As of eleven twenty five, twenty twenty five, Moorfield Construction has paid all outstanding invoices. At this time, Moorfield Construction has paid all past invoices and again seeks a connection to the city's water system through the hydrant on Village Drive for construction purposes related to the Acorn Ridge Casino. There is no negative fiscal impact. And the staff recommends the city council authorize staff to temporarily reconnect water access to Moorfield Construction at the fire hydrant on Village Drive and sell water to Moorfield Construction at the previous rate of one hundred dollars per four thousand gallons with a thirty dollar per month rental fee until the next city council meeting on twelve eleven, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment at this time. First, we have Butch Cranford for four point two. Okay.
Well, my thoughts on this are pretty well known. First of all, I have no understanding why the city of Plymouth is supporting a project that's in the county, number one. Uh, the problems that, uh, the construction, uh, may have with lack of water, uh, it would seem to be the tribe's problem. And I would, uh, I would like to, as I put in my comments, I think the city has a really good opportunity here based on both these agenda items to secure some documents that might be of value to the city. Uh, in fact, they might be of value as you go to negotiate. Like you, you might be interested in any well data for the eighty one gallons per minute wells that they allegedly have in the new one hundred gallon plus well that they drilled. Because I guess the eighty one gallon per minute wells weren't enough. You, you might want to have that well data. The other thing you might want to have before you enter into any negotiations with these people, you might want to validate that the property is in trust, in compliance with federal law. And that can be done very easily. All you have to do is ask for the pre-March twentieth, twenty twenty trustees and the tribal land consolidation plan approved by the Secretary of the Interior. And I can tell you, I know with certainty that those documents simply do not exist.
Thank you. Uh, John, four point two.
Uh, John Corbin. Um, you, I, I would like to, to know what action the city council took that to authorize the connection to the hydrant in the first place.
None.
So.
Kathleen did it by herself.
It was an illegal action by the tribe. So that's, uh, uh, that shows that they, they weren't acting in good faith there. They have not acted in good faith on the, uh, uh, taken of the, the city street into the trust lands and, and corrected that as they said they would. They have not acted in good faith in, in providing the water, uh, plan as required by agreement with the county. They have not acted in good faith and had a hearing on anything that has been before the state legislature, the, uh, county of Amador or anything else had, that had not one public hearing on any of those. And when do the people of Plymouth and the people of citizens of this community get a chance to comment on what is going on? It's just going to completely change the environment of our community. Um, and they haven't acted in good faith and taken care of any of those. And until they act in good faith with you, you've got to be in a level playing people, playing field. Um, it, it appears we are still in court. Uh, we're waiting for, uh, the, the judicial process. They've given them over, uh, almost three hundred days of extension on their replies on illegal action. And, um, it, it doesn't look like we're going to hear anything soon. But in, in the meantime, it's not our fault that they, they're building without um, uh, being cleared in the courts, but we've never had a day in court on this thing in, in twenty three years. So until they start acting in good faith, I think you, uh, got to demand that today do. We already went through this process, um, uh, fifteen years ago or more than that, when, when we had actually, we recalled three city council members. And then we filed suit against municipal service agreement. And we won that suit. That was, uh, and, uh, all of that was thrown out in the courts and, and we won that suit. So I'm not so sure that, that we're spending our money in the right place and, and in going after the federal government and the illegal things that they've done here. Um, if we continue to, to move forward with, without the, uh, a public hearing here uh, with the, it's, it's noticed the people of Plymouth, so the people of Plymouth have their opportunity to, to be a part of what's going on in that nightmare on the hill. Uh, it looks like maybe we're putting our money in the wrong place. Maybe we, we need to be filing again here to make sure that, that the letter, the law is followed in this city, probably. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Thank you, Stephanie Moreno. Um, I'm not going to go through my conflict of interest thing again. Um, but I, please consider it in the record. Um, I will say, Wendy, he can't tell you, you don't have a conflict. He's not authorized by state law to tell you that. All he's doing is providing you a legal defense. If you get fined, to throw yourself at the mercy of the FPPC and say, my attorney told me it was okay. So please be aware. He's not doing you any favors. Um, this is a cluster and it's the city that's not acting in good faith as far as I'm concerned. I think the tribe has every right to get water. They came and asked for what, the contractor asked for water. They were given water. You can blame a staff person, but you knew about that a long time ago and you didn't do anything to make it right, to discuss it in the city council. You let it continue. The staff report again has false facts. It says that the permit expired. If you can show me an expiration date on that permit, please do, because I don't see one. There's nothing on there that it expired in July. It does say estimated time of completion, which is normal for these kinds of things that people estimate how much they need it. Doesn't mean that the permit ends when the estimate's over with. Um, and then turning the water off requires, I'm going to hand you this municipal code because it's clear to me that very few people are reading it at the city. Notice of discontinuance other than for non-payment of residential water service except in emergency situations covered by fourteen oh eight one one nine point five. At least ten days before discontinuing non-residential service, the city shall provide the customer with a written notice which shall specify the reason for the proposed discontinuance and inform the customer of the procedure for and the availability, the opportunity to discuss the reason for the proposed discontinuance with a city rep who is empowered to review disputes, to rectify errors and to settle controversies pertaining to such proposed discontinuance of service. The name and phone number of such representatives shall be included in any such notice proposed discontinuance given to a customer. I didn't see that notice in the. I didn't see that notice in the packet. I'm assuming that it wasn't given. Also, um, your, the the emergency reason can only be for if there's an immediate health hazard. And this wasn't immediate health hazard. It's because it's political to turn this water off. There's no other reason to turn this water off this way right now.
Their bill hadn't been paid in three months.
Has been paid now. Most people get a notice on their door and a notice in the mail telling them to pay before they get disconnected. And then the other thing, your attorney is not doing you any favors because he hasn't talked about LAVCO. So LAVCO requires for you to go outside the city limits to provide water. A city or district may provide newer extended services by contractor agreement outside its jurisdictional boundary only if it first requests and receives written approval from the commission of the county in which affected territory is located. However, there's two exceptions, and I think the city of Plymouth qualifies for those two exceptions. And I think those exceptions should be put in the records so that it's recognized that you didn't have to go to LAVCO to protect yourself from potential liability and complaints later. And those exceptions are the transfer of non potable or non-treated water. Now, they're taking this water out of the hydrant, and it's well known that that is not considered not uh potable water. So I think that exception, I mean, you're not supposed to drink it because even though it's treated before going in, it may not meet the drinking water standard. So it cannot be considered potable water. It meets that.
Can I ask, can I ask you to wrap up, Stephanie? You're going past.
Yes, the second one is an extended service that a city or district was provided on before January one, two thousand and one. You guys adopted this municipal code allowing for service outside the city limits in nineteen eighty two, so it was a legitimate service. So it is legal for you to provide water to the tribe um and to the contractor. And I think you should acknowledge that, but I think it should be put in the record why it's legal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with Stephanie about the analysis of why I would believe that LAVCO approval isn't necessary here.
Did hell just freeze over?
No comments.
Feel like we should write this down in something. Anyone else, anyone else have a public comment? Keith?
I am Keith White, City of Plymouth. I know a lot of this is, it keeps on going back to the tribe with this, but in this situation, it's between the construction crew and the city. Multiple peo- people's jobs depend on this. They're just trying to get their work done um and trying to provide the paychecks for their employees. Um, there's people in this room that have ran construction outfits, worked in construction. They know what it takes, and they know that they need those supplies. Um, I'm just going as simple as that. I can understand where the construction outfit wants this. I mean, they just want to get their work done and get their paychecks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Four point two. Seeing none, hearing none, I'll close public comment and move to council discussion. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure.
Sorry. I'm tired.
Cameron? Has Moorfield Construction applied and filed the proper paperwork again?
They did file a, an encroachment permit. Um, it looks like it extends the construction permit that they initially had on the um, that came to term in July. Uh, we decided to put that on the next agenda for approval. So the only thing we have for water is the water application that we've been able to find from last February.
And can we make sure that it has a end date on there? Because I think for 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 clarification, I think that'd be good to have. So this is coming back on twelve eleven, right?
Correct, sir. And this is only to allow temporary usage of the water until you guys come to an agreement or make a decision on the eleventh.
Okay.
Anyone else? Debbie?
No, I have nothing.
So my comments are gonna be very much, well, actually it was brought by Mr. White um, to clarify that this issue isn't about between the city and the the tribe. The water agreement was from the contractor, which was very common for the contractor to come and request water. And this is about, uh, it was abruptly shut off on the water. We feel that you know, we in good faith, best thing to do is to give him an extension so he can continue and finish up his work. Um, and you know, be able to get his equipment moved out and get onto the next job. This, in my mind, really doesn't have anything to do so much with the casino or the tribe. It has to do with just doing what's right for the contractor here. And uh, so I think we should approve that, approve this.
Based on conversations tonight, I'm going to hold my comments until I can seek further legal counsel and FPPC um information. So I'm not gonna recuse myself, but I'm abstaining from this vote. So if someone wants to make a motion and.
But just to clarify, your abstention would count as a no vote, so we would still need, we would need the vote of three others for.
Okay, well, somebody still has to make a motion.
Correct.
Second, yeah.
Want to make it clear that your abstention counts as a no for purposes of adopting anything.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reconnect temporary construction water meter for construction at the Acorn Ridge Casino until the next regular city council meeting on December eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Dell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, um, we are, I think, done. Yes, nothing else. Um, yeah, do we want to, I don't think we do that on this, do we? Yeah, no, we don't do that on this. Um, all right. We'll adjourn this meeting at six fifty four P M. Have a good night, everybody. Yes, happy Thanksgiving.